First by the Selectmen for Selectmen, and second by the Board of Education. After that, we will help in the leading up for public participation and take your comments on the proposed budgets from all of us. Want to start? Whenever our Selectmen are ready. Alright. The bill rate budget and all those pieces kind of together, and there's going to be some people as we go through the line process, through the Board of Finance with town side, which is in the school side, I think we're going to make an argument that voters being overtaxed. And so I thought that would be worth kind of digging into whether or not that argument is supported. So I looked at comparison towns in our area by population, grand lists, mill rates, local taxes, and local tax rates per capita. You can see quite obviously that at least by population, there are some outliers here, including East Hartford, Enfield, Manchester, South Windsor, and Vermont. In terms of grand lists, those same five towns stand outside the average for comparable communities. Because they're not comparable in terms of population or grand list, those communities are going to be removed from this assessment moving forward. I do want to point out two things. Eight is in the revaluation cycle, so their numbers are likely to change. And secondly, you can see, you can see here in yellow where East Windsor is, where we will fall under new revaluation. Please keep in mind throughout the presentation that when I'm comparing Switzer to other towns, I'm comparing East Windsor FY twenty-five circumstances to these other towns FY twenty-four circumstances, because obviously their, their budgets aren't right now. But that's same comparable communities that we're going to use throughout the presentation. As you can see, East Windsor will now be one of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the region in terms of bill rates. Looking at local taxes generated by the budget to reach comparable community, this excludes any was it, I'm sorry?
I think I'm on the way.
This excludes any funding the town received. This is just the local dollars generated to support their role. Of the local dollars raised, running seven out of the towns. I then took a look at the unfunded locally in each comparable town and multiplied that by the bill rate, and then I divided that number by the total town population in the town. This shows where we fall in terms of local tax dollars per capita. We are and would continue to be right in the middle of the pack for similar communities in our region. We're currently six out of ten, and under town and Board of Education proposal. Recommendation can be sent as follows. The private education budget is requested to increase by one point two six million dollars, and town government budget is requested to increase by just shy of four hundred thousand. This means that same just before split existed between the town and the Board of Education for many years. Before we start walking through the particulars of the town government budget proposal, I want to apply a couple of things to keep in mind. First, we have free bargaining and supervisor. Police Union actually entering year three of a three-year contract, and the negotiated collective bargaining agreement, early in place, the precision increase for their, their wages was left at a reopener, which has to open by contract, not before June eighth this year. Secondly, our Santa Fe contract is taking its five-year contract on August thirty of this year. That contract is holder that was available at the time. Those negotiations are ongoing, and that number has come more into focus and is reflected both in the message I presented to you last week and in the presentation tonight. So the general government function is comprised of the following activities and sections. You can sit on the board and others can run through them, maybe we can't see. The Selectment Office, the Ethic Commission, Article, the Committee, the Board of Finance, the Assessor's Office, the Board of Assembly Appeals, Innovation Technology, Town Corks Office, the Registarians and Voters, the Planning Department, Planning and Housing Commission, the zoning board appeals, property insurance, inland wetlands and watercourses, the Veterans Commission, the AI Commission, the Conservation Mission, and the Economic Development Commission. As you can see, this is a pretty expansive function. Notable changes within this function include an increase of fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees, a forty-one thousand dollar increase in software licensing, and a twenty-six thousand dollar required, pretty close to me by you all, and we were born in this process. The Board of Selectmen's budget recommendation adopted my recommendation with the, with the thought that we would, what I had put forward in the initial budget as a placeholder, while the Registarians and Voters went through the first iteration of early voting, which started yesterday and ends Monday. Because that is the major driver of change in the Registarians' budget, is the cost associated with implementing early voting. The presidential primary, the general election in November, and the budget referendum in May, the person which all require early voting, a total of twenty-five days over the course of a calendar year in this particular service. That'll change year to year based on the election, but you all will need to take a pretty considered look at what their needs are versus what is budgeted, whether or not for a selectment regulation still reflects their act, after needs are going to be. Throughout the general government, the funding is increased by shy of a hundred and two thousand dollars over this year's already. So how does this compare with other towns? And I'm going to, I'm going to keep coming back to the same intent for her cohort over the course of this present campaign. Within these ten towns, our general government expenditures would have been four out of ten. This chart shows the distribution of the Police Commission, Emergency Management, the Building Department and Communications. Parting away, the largest piece of Public Safety Cost Center is the Police Department. My recommendation is that the funding for the Police Department increase by eighteen thousand dollars over the current year operating budget. I talked quite a bit more about that, so. The Police Commission budget is going to remain the same as last year. In Emergency Management, you're going to see a reduction of ten thousand dollars in the stipend line, rights and stipends that have become excessive over time. Emergency generators under overload, which is something that is new this year, but it's something that is necessary. We've maintained them in tests over time. We haven't tested them under a load sufficiently to make sure that we know that they are actually prepared to service us, and that they've been worthy. This was going to fix that. The Building Department is showing slight overall reduction, but keeping in mind the building official and number of the supervisor's bargaining unit is highest paid position within that department, and the overall department is certainly going to be say that for any kind of collective bargaining agreement that is currently out, again, the supervisors, the police dispatchers and the police union, those monies are not represented in the department line, those employees are, are staff. They are in the non-negotiated wages line in the budget. As those collective bargaining agreements are settled, the appropriate fund from non-negotiated wages is proportioned based on employee to the broader department. Again, this, this includes contractual adjustments from the last police team contract, as well as the Kirkland Union contract that we just recently ratified. The FY twenty-five budget does not include the, the year three of the police contract, because that is open. It does not include increases for the dispatchers, and it does not include an increase for the two supervisors who work on the department all around the contract again, and those contracts entitled the departments that I do want to apply. First, both the police officers union types I said already, so looking at the department detail, you'll see an increase in officer salary lines of twenty thousand dollars, despite those contracts being out of, out of compassion. You'll also see an offset in the part facility costs. Those two things taken counter or intended to add an additional police officer to the Police Department, more specific and intended purpose than the line has gone down by twelve thousand dollars, which reflects the resizing of the salary decisions for the police of minute fifteen. You'll also see an increase in the training line of twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. To me, this is the most important change that's in the end budget this year. The money will provide all officers to be live-trained and active shooter response. This is something that Carl and I have been discussing since last summer when we had a couple of training classes. The Tomlin County Emergency Management with the Department of Homeland Security and the Federal Emergency Management Agents, all have important staffing under this training, and I think this is important. I think that the role is previous in leaders' place. I think that we're willing to make sure that our representatives have an opportunity to do a live-action drill with each other, so that we understand whether there's roles and possibilities everybody is going to have, should be unthinkable happen. Uniform slide. As many people will know, we are in the process of staffing up police officers due to some turnover within the department, and whether those positions are filled through either lateral transfer or compliance transfer, or with new officers going through the police academy, they are going to have to be updated. So there's an increase in the uniform by cover that. Lastly, we did make a reduction in the equipment line. Both of those things, I think we've done either within the current budget or through any of your transfer when we approached the board last year. Police service is expensive, and it's fairly heavily dependent on personnel. East Windsor serves twenty-six strong police officers and thirteen civilians. Showing here are our police costs relative to those same comparable communities. Any town with asterisk on the screen, I know it's a little small for me, but any town notable, East Windsor and Windsor Labs are the only two towns, hotels and local highway. And if you're looking for a deeper dive into what our needs are relative to those other communities, we've been a deputy to quite articulately to that. And finally, communications. Communications has two parts to it. Radio system and our town county dispatch. We're increasing our radio maintenance costs this year. We are in the process of developing a replacement plan for that radio system, but in the meantime, need to make sure that we, the system that we have functions, so maintenance stuff's got to go up a little bit. The other piece of communications budget is, is associated with town county's mention. You can see on this slide the history of the fees charged to the town from town dispatch. In FY twenty-two, we made six thousand dollars. Last year, we didn't pay anything. And we paid, I'm sorry, that was just the EMD cost, the four thousand five hundred dollars. Moving forth, Town County is changing their, their model from a per capita system to a fee-for-call system. That twenty-six thousand six hundred and two dollar number represents our EMD costs and costs of dispatching our ambulance services only. The cost of dispatching each fire department are included in respective fire departments' budgets there. Per call system is going to continue to phase in next year too, so those numbers are going to grow again. This is one of the number of areas where the work has been over the next year is going to be worked on, establishing a sort of agreement between the town and Tomlin County Dispatch. And I've been saying quite vividly that good fences make good neighbors, and to the best of everybody's knowledge, we do not have, nor have we ever had a big service contract with Town County. That's something that we need to put in place moving forward, so. Overall, the public safety function is expected to increase by three one thousand dollars over the current year's operating budget. Again, keep in mind that those three bargaining units are out of contract. When I, when those contracts settle, those numbers are going to change all over the mayhem. This shows the distribution of funds within public works. Public Works includes Public Works Department, Town Properties, Road Improvement, the Building Committee, and Sanitations. And SFS for employees and the settled contracts for Public Works Union and third movement employees, which have now contracted for two and three budget irrespective. As an interesting side with the Public Works team contract that was very recently settled, required a higher level of employee contribution for their pensions than they received in wage increases, which means the town actually indebted back more away from the police union, from the Public Works union members they got in wage increases. Something that does not happen very often, it's worth noting. There are, these are increases in the Vatican Water Company's water rate, but they're also offset by reductions in electricity costs and other places within budget, or within the town. Sanitation, I talked about this a little bit earlier. Sanitation is now expected to increase by ninety-two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is a savings of just over twenty-three thousand from where it thought it was going to be. And again, we're working towards finalization of that contract. One caveat to that is a, a user-based fee system. The more you throw in, the more you pay. So as townspeople are drawing more big way at home with those, if that timing shows up, things that are possible. All relying on time is the worry. Year over year, the Public Works Department is, you can see the danger. Turning to our ten town cohort, East Windsor ranks fourth. The community service function consists of the senior, senior services, elderly commission, social services, libraries, parks and recreation, and historical. Senior Services set to increase to only seven thousand dollars, all but hundred dollars of which tied to contract changes. Social Services, it requires a net decrease of fourteen thousand dollars. That seems a little odd, and there is a reason why. Much more, it's been much more demanding this in years than, than you would think. That's largely due to handful of structural fires or condemnations that require the town to a short-term, which has earned a medium-term basis, relocate, place persons. We're out of that business now. There are no longer any people who have been displaced due to condemnation or, or acts that require them to have to go over their homes. So the town both libraries recommended to have funding increase by two percent. The warehouse point library had provided an increase of almost nine percent, but those were just high salary increases, and when we looked at their salary history over time, they, those, it seemed like a two percent increase was more justified than a number percent increase. They've been, a number of them is running at five and eight percent increases, so that was, that was the challenge. The increases in goods and recreation are driven by a number. The cost of contracting with a fertilizer company to fertilize town park four times a year, although that is partially offset by a reduction in purchase services. We don't have to, or I'm sorry, in slides, we're foregoing the first of ninety-six hundred dollars worth of fertilizer and moving that into the professional service world, we'll be contracting an outside company to do that. We're also hoping to do an installation of a parking area at Prospect Hill Park. That's something that's been The community services function in total requests to go up by just a little less than twenty, twenty-six thousand dollars over that. So then looking at our ten, ten-town cohort, we see that our community services function ranks fifth out of ten in terms of spending on that function. Debt and capital. This consists of that so that those, those two are going up by two. Looking at that ten-town comparative, East Windsor ranks tenth of ten in terms of debt. While it differs long-term indebtedness from being required constituents, it also correlates to a decade-long aversion of dealing on large town capital projects. And we see that, we see our infrastructure condition that we haven't put, invested in the means to over time. Always cheaper to fix something now than it is to fix it. As a town, we've taken a fix-it-later approach for many years, largely the result of year after year of two percent of this. The time has come to, as you all know, we're willing to take, take a look at our infrastructure and make some difficult decisions. This slide shows not only where the town of East Windsor is, but it also gives you a sense of really where it should be. Benefits lines. Four one A and four fifty-seven country unions, other post employment benefits, tuition reimbursement, unemployment compensation, works compensation, health insurance, heart and height pension, and physicals. The major driver in this line, as always the case, is health insurance. We contract our health insurance through the committed prevention two-point-up prevention pressure two-point-up and PP. The state balloon planning that municipalities are allowed to sign into. Initially, our renewal rate through the number, they came back with revised numbers saying budget between three and forty percent. And so that's enough that I advanced to the quarter slide in the beginning of the budget process. And then when the final renewal numbers came into the prevention partnership, the renewal number was two percent. That is an absolute homeland. So as it stands, our current costs are expected to increase by ninety-seven thousand dollars. That could have been six cost effective into a benefits perspective. The other major savings in employee benefits this year is the opportunity to reduce the twenty-seven payroll by two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Because of savings in our health insurance, in twenty-seven payroll, we are able to reduce overall benefit line by a hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars over last year. I don't think I've ever been able to get that. Run track mountains, South King of Holland, Bramby, I don't, again, I have no idea what's going on on those rocks, but there's something there. Revenues. So revenues are the per, the Board of Finance, but the West Leipen does consider those. We're going through our deliberative process. And while, while these are entirely up to you guys to do, this is what we're recommending. This year, in, in the current year, there is a one point two million dollar use of the on investments of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and increases in our police department fees by a hundred thousand dollars. All of these are driven by recent history, so we look back over the latter layers to see where things have been. And we're also forecasting a little where we think they are. And I think they are both safe, achievable and somewhat conservative assumptions. And lastly, in the annual budget, the state legislature got the town additional education came into town too late last year to be incorporated into the budget, but it is here in time, and we know that it is in time to be incorporated this year. It is state revenue, it has to be booked as a state revenue, and then our forecasting incorporates that thousand dollars as additional state revenue. So now we're talking a little bit about revenue. We know that this is front of center a lot of people's minds, especially as the process continues to move along. This shows where our analysts have that each year between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-three grand list years. If you look at two thousand and twenty-three grand list, you'll see an increase of forty percent from the previous year. Roughly eighty percent of the grand list in any given year is based on real estate, and it isn't as fast as anyone that really values, have been and remain at very high levels. What was it being? Typically, the higher the grand list, the lower the bill rates in order to be with our budgetary expenses. Showed here is the change in grand value from the current year to the new year in terms of both one dollars and percentage. As you can see, the motor vehicle brand list is effectively flat, which is actually a win of the town assessor reporting decreases in mobile brand lists around the state. Ours has been steady, it's not growing, but then it's steady, which is good. The personal property grandest number and the remainder of the grand list is in residential and commercial products. This chart shows the mill history for the town over twenty-five years. To start, to take those years in the revaluation perform, as you can see, in some years, revaluations put mill rate a little bit higher. Some years it has sustained the previous mill rate, and some years the mill rate has dropped. This year, the mill rate will drop considerably. Mill rate operating expense. In a reval year, we can't know how the mill rate changed more than the end of big, so how old? Because the pre-problem is there's a factor differently by revaluation, though from macro way, it's really at least by these gauge on these bases, there's one side, but it's all on the left here like this. But we do know that if C R P is full as it currently is expected to, and the board plans for to make no changes to town side of the budget or to the school side of the budget, something that we're seeing point two being currently down to twenty-four point nine, which is the lowest mill rate in twelve years, and it is substantially on par with where we were in two thousand and four. There are areas of the budget on the town side that were reduced to get our revenue submission as possible. This can say that these were more meritorious, that they weren't necessary, or that they were necessary, but we do think that many and not most of these requests will be accomplished in some other way. We do think that many and most of these requests will be accomplished in some other way. The accomplishments that were requested through the budget process is not funded. We can get them done without impacting the budget for the bill for fiscal years. And I cite my sources. Uh for the for me, guys.
Uh good evening. Uh so we're pleased to present the board of that opposed budgets. Uh before we start, um I'd like to just reference uh to them. So so when you receive the FY twenty five. Uh minus uh worksheets and two uh budget. So the budget public. Uh looks like this. Um the comments match up in both documents. Uh the playbook provides a narrative along with. From the Board of Education proposal. And certainly can access uh an entire book from either of these resources uh at any time. Uh so with that, um I ended off to our chair Kate and our chair Heather, and I just get started presentation.
Good evening, I am Bert. Um everybody's Board of Education's right chair. So this budget. Strategic plan focused on these four areas that include the portrait of graduate. This is expanding portrait of the graduate approach to all grade levels, connecting elementary student experiences to the middle and high school. And showing students at every grade level the choices and pathways to pursue their passions in the hopes of a positive, positive life. Our strategic plan also identified the need to address our. Day's learning and teaching needs. We on the Board of Education are pleased to see that the word of selectmen in the board of elements recognize the challenges faced. Are committed to working to give our community and the edu- community educational facilities a piece. And we continue to create our efforts to share and communicate not just our successes, our schools witness. But our challenges we face with our community. Tonight is a testament to those. Uh this is next slide is about our portrait of the graduate. The portrait of graduate highlights the vision and the work that goes into providing a quality education starting in preschool and going through the twelfth grade. It focuses on the Eastunder Public School experience for either our schools. These sort of public schools. Are invested in implementation of Connecticut Core Standards and the Eastunder Portrait of the Graduate. These three are standards and former instruction as well provide a guide for us to align our. Continue to evaluate and revise all aspects of our teaching and learning in this. System with the portrait of the graduate in mind. All Eastunder graduates, all of our community's graduates, be informed lifelong learners, responsible citizens, and helpful individuals. We are invested in raising our students' performance by providing high quality human resources. And through a continued professional development of our teachers. These high state and district standards provide a vision for educational. Our programs and initiatives. This is what our portrait of the graduate is all about.
So uh budget proposal continues to support our free K through our great call priorities outlined in the portrait of graduate, along with the good work that's taking place. Um that produces graduates who become lifelong learners, civic leaders, innovative problem solvers, responsible citizens and more. It's no different. Uh common email here today is a funding clip. Um and you may be aware, funding clip. Is a common uh theme among most districts across the state and even across the nation. Uh the clip is the result of law of federal COVID and S R grants set to expire this year. So when addition to the funding clip. Uh medical dental vision insurance currently funded at an increase of three hundred and twenty six thousand seven hundred. As indicated, health insurance premium uh over the town award event came at a two percent. Um increase, which I can say we were also very pleased with. Uh however, the challenge on our end is the true global difference, the much different from last year to this upcoming fiscal year is almost a fourteen percent increase. And this is largely due to the coverage of thirty employees um changing due to like um changing events. Uh so for example, we. Boys who had family plus tenants. We may have had some that were on single plans uh that moved to um uh two person plans or um two person plans, the family plans. Um uh with uh again getting married or having uh children. Uh so those projections in this current year are talking about why uh twenty five or not twenty four. Um were three hundred and fifteen thousand um higher than initially budget. We thank you. Um certainly helps, but we had challenges even before that two percent. Um increase uh hit um just due to the changes to those thirty. Uh I also want to highlight that special education increases in this budget reflected adjusted amount. After making a cutoff setting revenues related to those costs. And addition taking uh two hundred and sixty five uh hundred thousand to the two percent fund and placing revenue against special education. Our budget booklet, you'll see that our cost of special education reflect a decrease from our current year to next year's projected um year. Uh and that's because it um is offsetting revenues. Uh but we did not reflect that two hundred and sixty five uh hundred thousand revenue from the two percent fund, then we increase of over two hundred and thirty three thousand. And then we removed our trace special ed um excess cost grant revenue. Uh dollar after revenues have already been offset. Uh and then further, our pension contributions have been despite sixty seven thousand. Uh this is in addition to eighty nine thousand increase from this year and totally more than over a hundred and fifty thousand over the last two years. Uh so with every challenge with the budget, uh there's always a solution or at least a proposed solution. Uh so Ryan. Um working with the board of that members to address our needs. Um so I like how you said we produce in every popular area while maintaining what we currently have by reallocating uh resources. Uh well, this includes a reduction of four tutors. One pair, a special education teacher, a building sub and accounts pay a position. So most of these productions have been planned, um not all, but most of them, as this is beginning this year to help offset some of the funding clip. Uh just. In our middle and high school. Um to continue to support the extension of band of music, which I tell you would still be short of what we previously had um years ago. Um and in addition, um we have a remaining of two hundred thousand R P S R. Uh funds that we are going to use to cover recurring cost technology to support the district's one to one student to divide initiative. Um that'll be the same concept that we've utilized. So here's our budget at a glance. Um I want to be clear, uh this is not a level server budget, um rolling over everything that we have. Uh today, we put to a ten point five percent increase. Um so obviously, that wasn't something that we felt comfortable uh putting forward um to this board or towards the community. Uh the numbers represented um on the slide represent the changes to the budget. So again, grandmother. Our actual satellite cost having over eight percent. Uh what you see here is a uh increase in cost because of those offsetting uh revenues. So that would include our choice to let revenue, that goes special at brands. And the two percent one. Um may recall in previous years. Um choice led to which revenue was previously offset um with medical. Um when we proposed last year, we kind of indicated that change was going to take place. Uh the reason we moved. That was generated, which is one of the changes that we've made as far as um reporting uh with our business office. Um another example, that's easy to uh point out this technology, as I mentioned, um we're applying two hundred thousand. Of our S R funds, of what we have remaining left to offset. If we weren't doing that, you would see the technology. Uh budget two hundred thousand higher. Again, this is our second collective year though, so in some ways you're still preparing. Then also, as I mentioned, um we're strategically utilizing two hundred and sixty five thousand of the two percent fund for special ed private tuition placement. Um so in the past, um sure this uh board remembers uh you as a board highlighted that um this fund has not been utilized since its existence. Certainly, our current circumstances warrant the use of these funds due to high and average um increases along with the funding clip and loss of grand funds. Uh which I tell you is more than the average one uh district for special ed private placement as a contingency or any other unanticipated cost. So here's our budget at different plans. Um so the graph here represents uh local budget allocations in each department. Uh this is how local gets out throughout property departments. Um it's also in the budget. It's less than percent of the entire budget and the number rounded um to the mere percent. So that's why it shows it. At zero because it's less half a percent. Uh but you can see we do have a a bike for it. Um salaries are embedded across each department and they represent a total of sixty five percent of uh the budget. Um and then as you notice, uh specialized is twenty four percent of the total budget. It was right in the middle state averages. Um I. To get to reach preschool all the way through the age of twenty two, they continue to require transition program. So taking all that information, um and playing the school book in perspective. Uh the total cost of education is thirty point eight million. After offsetting handsome revenues, uh agenda board uh proposes approximately twenty eight million. The use of the two percent fund would bring the budget um to twenty seven. Education, sharing grants, further reduce taxpayer liability and efforts toward the mill rate. So ultimately, our students receive an education approaching thirty one million at twenty eight percent discount due to outlay funding uh sources. Um so to share uh final points is hopefully everyone can see, goal is to utilize every single funding source to provide quality education to maximize that. Competing objectives, which is not easy to do. Um on behalf of the board of education, we do the team, we look for working with you, uh the board of finance. Um to provide our students with all the educational experience while also being aware protecting our local taxpayers. Who planning preparation and being strategic in our decisions that we feel that this budget uh does just that. Um so I might end with saying thank you. Uh we look forward to the work ahead. We know there's uh uh some work to do and uh we look forward to any progress.
So uh it was a start of public participation for the the programs are. Um there is a signup ship here, right? Do we want to sign as we actually speak to the uh. Uh the board are getting comments. Um if you want to come up with an action, I guess, and we probably maybe sign you so that secretary can quit in in minutes. Um but last for public participation.
Um I thought to the budget creates well, um order design. More well than I want to. Um and I looked at all of the town side. There's really nothing in this budget that is um adding anything to much of anything. It's pretty much that quote people will be. New grade programming, there's no anything. Um. And um. I know there's always the the two percent. Charter issue that's always hanging out there, trying to try to stay close to them. Um and I know here there's the issue of the revout. That happens, which um. Is going to be difficult for a lot of people, but it's really a difficult and separate. Continuing now. If um anything that took up from that is just going to be a detriment to the town. But he's going to lose the job. We're not going to have any concerts in the park. We're not going to be able to have as many kids working. Um. And you all have a very difficult job. Um. And I just want you to know that I'm in support of the budget and I'm in support of what you all decide to do in the end of it. Um I have great faith that you will lose the right.
Curtis Neil, one three middle was road, Robert. Um. An apparent of three children in the Eastwinder's district, I would ask that. You support what is put in front of you for the Eastwinder Board of Education. Build on what Charlie had. And I just want, I know that a lot of kids don't protect them. They want to go to school at times. And the one thing that we're adding uh we're looking at would be the core teacher. And I know from my own children's experience that. Having that to drag them to school is if you don't go to school, you don't get to divorce or land and that. It's not a very big ask. And so I'm asking you, please consider supporting the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Last one more time. You'll adjourn the uh public uh presentation of the budget in public hearing. And. Go ahead and read your votes through that.
Anybody.
For the uh here.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Your second. Your second. David, hi.